Call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-20 for September 3, 2024. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will come, on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and give us such trust as we can give those who trust us against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; but I am speaking in the kingdom, the power, and the glory of God. Amen. Our allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, consent agenda passes. We have two proclamations tonight. The first proclamation is to recognize the month of September as National Recovery Month. Vice President Merritt will be reading the proclamation. Jessica Sucksauer, Deputy Health Officer, is president? Present? Here she is. Great. I'm going to go over the podium there, and he'll present at the podium. Thank you.
Hello.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
Great. Come on in.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Before I read this, I do want to say thank you to everybody at the Health Department for all the work you do with addiction treatment and recovery. Your work and the work of the groups and organizations that you collaborate with are making a difference in our community, and we're grateful for your efforts. So, all that being said, this is a proclamation for National Recovery Month, whereas National Recovery Month is held every September to educate Americans that substance use treatment and mental health services can enable those with a substance and/or mental health disorder to recover and live a healthy, rewarding life, and whereas Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery and reinforces that behavioral health is essential, treatment is effective, and people can do recover. And whereas millions of Americans' lives have been transformed through recovery, and Recovery Month provides a vehicle to celebrate these accomplishments, speaking about the gains made by those in recovery, and sharing success stories helps increase awareness and furthers a greater understanding about the disease of mental and substance use disorders. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims September as National Recovery Month in Wycomico County and encourages all citizens to celebrate those who are in recovery and gives support and hope to those struggling with a substance use disorder, done this third day of September 2024, signed by all the members of the Wycomico County Council.
Thank you.
Please say something.
Absolutely. I just want to say, thank you so much for the proclamation for National Recovery Month. Thank you all for the support. I know we have worked together on different Go Purple initiatives to light up the county purple, and so we appreciate that. You're absolutely right, recovery is possible no matter what anybody's circumstances are. We try to do what we can, for sure, for anyone in need of treatment or recovery support. So, we have lots of community partners that help us make the difference of people's lives in Wycomico County so that they can establish their recovery journey. I would say, you know, the next event that we have is on September 28 at Warwick Community College from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for our Shatter the Stigma Walk. For anyone who would want to join us, please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roy, want a picture?
Sure.
Thanks for having a certificate of appreciation for a very special person, for Mrs. Lori Carter, who served as a, our Wycomico County Department, I say served as, as the Director of the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, and with us for 37 years. I'm going to present it up at the podium. Good. Good to see you.
Good to see you, too, John.
Lori's a really special friend, known Lori forever. And as we shared at her celebration that we had in this room the other day, and I told it a million times, this will be the last time, I swear. Lori was the very, very, very first person I ever met in government. I was sent over here to find out some issues I needed to know about weatherization, and I was completely intimidated going to the government office, though, not knowing what to anticipate or anything. And Lori Carter, this is the name that I was given, this is the first person I ever met, and she made it so easy. She was so welcoming, listened, and then helped me with the entire program in about 10 minutes, which really probably, you know, for the average person could have taken 10 hours, but she made it so easy. So, and I never forgot that. And that's why she is in this position that she is now, is because she knows how to deal with people to start with, not just the public, but also fellow workers, people that work with her and people that work for her. And so, we have this for you. I left my glasses on the table, so I'm going to read it. You want to read it for yourself? This is a, it's with great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County Council extend this certificate of appreciation to Lori Carter for 37 years of service to the Wycomico County Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, including six years as the Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development. On behalf of the citizens of Wycomico County, the Wycomico County Council extends their appreciation and gratitude for your 37 years of service done this third day of September in 2024. Thank you. I'm sure, Lori, I want to make a couple of comments to let you know how much we appreciate. When she was at her party, she was thanking all the people who had hired her and thanking them for their support and their confidence in her, and I thought, you don't get it, we should be thanking you. We did it because we liked you, we did it because we had confidence in everything you, that you, that you brought to the table. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. But she will be with us. We thought so much, we are going to actually have her in a role, a most important role for Wycomico County as a grant administrator, which is what Wycomico County needs. Exactly. So. All right. Well, this is you. Do you want to, do you want a picture? Go ahead.
First of all, I just want to thank the council. I want to thank the council now, and even the council before. John, it's been a long time, and I just want to say, I really appreciate the opportunity to work for Wycomico County, so much so, I decided to come back. It is a great organization, no matter what you may hear, no matter what you may think, this is a great organization, and I am so grateful. And even when I look out in the audience, and I'm sorry, John, I have to do this, Sharon Mars, could you please stand?
Yes.
Please. The reason why I specifically asked Sharon to stand, when I started here in 1987, Sharon was my mentor. She was the first person that I could look to. Let's be honest, I was the first African American, and I've never used that from the time I worked here. But I was the first person that I went, someone said, "Go and find," the same way somebody said, "Go find" me, someone said, "Go and find Sharon Mars." And Sharon has been a, definitely a mentor, someone who has taught me to really pretty much understand the good and the bad and the ugly of government, but how to survive and how to just treat people well, and I was taught that by my parents. I treat people the way that I wish to be treated, and that's the legacy that I want to live, and that's the one that I will continue to live as I continue in the next position. Thank you. John.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have three public hearings on the agenda this evening. Each public hearing notice was published in the local newspaper and on the county's website. The first public hearing is on Resolution Number 105-2024. This is to approve the relocation of a forest conservation easement containing 4.15 acres located on Tax Map 57, Parcels 121 and 123, owned by Timo Power Incorporated, to an off-site mitigation bank. As a summary, Timo Power Incorporated has submitted a request to relocate the 4.15-acre forest conservation easement to an off-site mitigation bank. The relocation involves a two-to-one ratio, meaning 8.30 acres of forest conservation will be conserved within a mitigation bank. The purpose of the relocation is for the construction of a utility-scale solar project on Parcels 121 and 123, located on the easterly side of Old Eden Road. And council had a work session on this request on July the 16th, 2024, and we have Mr. Colin Harrison here, environmental planner, if you have any questions.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 105-2024. If you'd like to make any comments in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 105-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 105-2024.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 106-2024. This is to amend the fiscal year 2025 capital budget to authorize the county executive to utilize grant awards previously approved from the Federal Aviation Administration through the Airport Improvement Program and bipartisan infrastructure law, and from the Maryland Aviation Administration for Phase Two of the construction of the Runway Extension Project. The airport has submitted grant applications to the FAA and MAA for the Runway Extension Project, which were approved by the county council on August the 20th. This resolution seeks to adjust the capital budget to accommodate the additional grant funding.
Mrs. Hurley. This time, we have a public hearing on Resolution Number 106-2024. If you have anything you'd like to make a comment on in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 106-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 106-2024. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 107-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 2025 capital budget to accept a donation from the Wycomico County Free Library, Inc., in the amount of $571,895 from the library reserves, for the purpose of partially funding the Parsonsburg Library Branch renovation project. This proposal is to transfer funds from the library's reserves to the county for the Parsonsburg Library renovation. The amount will be combined with the $334,000 already allocated in the capital budget for the same project, increasing the capital budget to $1,175,895 for the Parsonsburg renovation project. And we have Mr. Seth Hirschberger here, Director of Public Libraries, if you have any questions.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 107-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in regard to this resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 107-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 107-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. Mr. Hirschberger, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
One second.
All those in favor of Resolution 107-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next, for your consideration is Resolution Number 108-2024. This is to reallocate the existing CARES funding grant for the new fuel farm project to the Piedmont parking lot project in the amount of $500,000. And we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, Director of Aviation, if you have any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 108-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions from Mr. Rudy? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is the submission of an appointment to the Social Services Advisory Board by Mr. Bunky Luthman, Director of Administration.
Good evening, Mr. Luthman.
Hi, good evening.
How are you, sir?
Doing great.
Thanks for being here.
We also have Roy Broington here. But the Social Services Advisory Board selects the local director, advises the local director, reviews periodic evaluations of the local department, and consults with the local director. I have Roy here. I also have, for my next set of appointments, Matt's here for the police accountability appointments, and he has a handout on that one.
Pretty good. Thank you, thank you very much.
Before you use Resolution Number 109-2024, this is confirming the appointment of Lily Chaffang Tsai, Ph.D., to serve as a member of the Department of Social Services Advisory Board.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 109-2024. That motion second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is the submission of three reappointments to the Wycomico County Police Accountability Board.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. Matt Lightsole, Assistant Director of Administration. You guys just received a handout, and it just is a short summary sheet that kind of refreshes your memory on what the Police Accountability Board here is in Wycomico County. It is made up of three different boards, one being the Police Accountability Board, the second, an Administrative Charging Committee, and the third, a Trial Board. The appointments that you have before you this evening are actually reappointments. The first three are reappointments to the Police Accountability Board, and then the last two are to the Administrative Charging Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Resolution Number 110-2024 is confirming the reappointment of Ronald B. Lewis as Chair to the Wycomico County Police Accountability Board.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 110-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to ask, what's the process for getting on the Accountability Board for people in the audience if they want to be on the board?
So, if we're talking about the first board, the Police Accountability Board, those are appointed positions by the county executive.
Okay. And I guess they're all, are they all appointed by the executive, or?
Yes, on that board.
Okay. There are currently no vacancies, I don't believe, and they also have terms, so when that term is about to come up, I think that would be.
I believe they follow a three-year term, and we had just started these boards in 2022, and they staggered the terms, so they're not all coming vacant at the same time.
All right. Any other question?
I have a question. How many minorities are on this board? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's two or three on the Police Accountability Board.
You are three. Could you get that information to me?
Yes, I'll send it to you.
Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 110-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution Number 111-2024 is confirming the reappointment of Galen E. Atkins to the Wycomico County Police Accountability Board.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 111-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 112-2024 is confirming the reappointment of David H. Owens to the Wycomico County Police Accountability Board.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 112-2024. Second?
Right.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution 112-2024 passes unanimously.
Okay, next is the submission of two reappointments to the Wycomico County Police Administrative Charging Committee. Did you want to give an update on that one?
Yeah, the, I kind of addressed both of them in the beginning, but the Administrative Charging Committee is the second board that makes up the Law Enforcement Review Boards here in Wycomico County. Currently, before you, you have two reappointments. These are positions that are just being reappointed. There are no current vacancies.
Resolution Number 113-2024 is confirming the reappointment of Ronald B. Lewis to the Wycomico County Police Administrative Charging Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 113-2024. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 114-2024 is confirming the reappointment of Mark David B. Wilson to the Wycomico County Police Administrative Charging Committee.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 114-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Jane.
Nothing about, against Babe Wilson, because I know him, but he's a police officer. Do you have any laypeople on that board?
Yes.
I just need, the reason why I'm asking these questions, when we first, when I first came on the council, I saw one time, I don't know how often they've had meetings, what their, their minutes are, what cases have been solved or have not been solved. I don't think we've had a report on this Police Accountability Board. Have we had a report?
No, no, we have not. Wouldn't be a bad idea, I guess.
Yeah, and I think we need to, because I'm skeptical about doing this, you know, without knowing what you all have done so far.
Sure.
And we need that report if it's nothing but quarterly, what, what cases you may have, not necessarily give the details, because it might be an open case, but, and like, like I asked before, with all these boards, I like to see a minority, non-police officer, a law enforcement on there, and I'd also like their attendance record.
Yeah, we have all of that and can certainly provide it. If you'd like, we could set up a, you know, a short presentation. I thought.
That's what we need. No, we need that.
They did that at the end of the year, but maybe we didn't this year. But sure, we can do that. There's a, there's a yearly report that's already compiled.
And the reason why I said it, public asks us questions about it. We formed this, but are they active? That's the question, are they active? And that's my concern. I want to see if they're active. Maybe I can, if you don't have a minority on there, maybe I could suggest people or encourage people to get involved in this that I think that are qualified. We want average citizens to participate, not just police officers.
I agree.
Well, and just so you know, the feedback we've gotten sort of from state and even people from MACO is that there are counties basing their Police Accountability Board on our structure, because we got out really fast. And of course, this predates me and Matt, goes back to previous council, previous acting executive. They, they moved really quickly and put something up. I, there, there may be a county or two that still hasn't really gotten where they're doing regular meetings, but we've been, I think they meet pretty regularly, Matt attends them, so.
Yeah, the, the Police Accountability Board meets quarterly, but the Charging Committee meets every month, and they're fairly active, they're reviewing cases each month.
But we can certainly get the data for you.
Yeah, I can't personally remember whether the actual initial legislation required a report, or some type of reporting measures, maybe annually, you think?
Yeah, the Police Accountability Board prepares an annual report. I'm not sure, if you didn't get that, I'll take blame for that one.
We very much may have, we really may have gotten that, but I think, you know, like Shaney says, it wouldn't hurt to just, you know, have a discussion on it.
Sure.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 114-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Next, for your consideration is Resolution Number 115-2024, approving a priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation's fiscal year 2025 through 2030 Consolidated Transportation Program. Council had a work session on this request on August the 20th, 2024, and we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, Director of Aviation, and Mr. Mike Swabe, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 115-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 115-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
And next item for business is Resolution Number 116-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 2025 Budget Position Control Document Exhibit F for the Deputy Sheriff/Sergeant position, and I believe we have Major Todd Richardson and Pam Olin here, Director of.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 116-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 116-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 117-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 2025 Budget Position Control Document for the adjustment to the State's Attorney's Office salary, and that's the same exhibit, Exhibit F. And we have Ms. Jamie Dykes here, our Wycomico County State's Attorney.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 117-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 117-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, motion passes, resolution passes unanimously. Something like that.
Continuing, we have Resolution Number 118-2024, amending the fiscal year 2025 Budget Position Control Document to provide a salary increase of 3% for an employee who answers calls for emergency services.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 118-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 118-2024 say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's approved, Resolution 118-2024 passes.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. United States Attorney, good to see you here tonight.
Thank you.
At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Keep in mind, we do have a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, council. Holly Ortell, county resident, also the president of the Wycomico County Firefighters Association. I want to thank you all for what you continue to do for the fire department. It does not go unnoticed. I have a little issue. This evening, I did speak to Ms. Hurley about the tax credit, the 1099, if she's heard any information on it. She informed me that she did send an email to Ms. Pam Olin between a week to two weeks ago, and has not heard back. It almost makes me wonder, does Pam really care about us? Does she care about the volunteers? It's unacceptable. You know, as I have said, you know, we're volunteers, 100% volunteers in this county. You take care of those that take care of you, that answer that call in the middle of the night. So, please, Pam, if you hear me, please respond to the email and help all of us firefighters out. And lastly, I hope that I'm able to say this, but Parsonsburg Fire Department's having their 100th anniversary this Saturday. The parade starts at 1:00, there will be food, crafts, music, it'll be a great time, so hopefully, we can see you all to come out and support our, your neighboring fire companies. That's it, thanks.
Hi, David Kenny from Hebron, Maryland, and I'm here to talk about Barron Creek Road. I understand that it was pulled from the priority list at the last meeting. I'm actually representing two organizations that have an interest in repairing Barron Creek Road. First, the Atkins Historical Museum Complex, which owns the property on the south side of Barron Creek Road, from North Athol Road around the dam to the spillway on the north side of the pond. A little history about the road, dam, and pond. Howard and Louise Atkins researched Barron Creek Pond and wrote the long history. Mr. Atkins grew up in the house at the southeast side of the dam. The pond and dam have been in place at least back to 1735, according to land records, making it one of the oldest historical structures in the county. That makes it older than Maryland and also older than the United States. According to colonial law, a road was required across the dam. So Barron Creek Road started as a pathway for horse and wagon, later was considered part of U.S. Route 213 until Route 50 was, was built and eventually became Barron Creek Road. Also. Also, a note, in 1751, when the transpeninsula line was being surveyed to find the midpoint between the Atlantic Ocean and Chesapeake Bay, which is the bottom corner of Delaware, by Mason and Dixon, and they recorded that the line came within one foot of the Miller's House. There are markers on the Atkins property from that survey. The road bed or the dam and the pond were private property. This always caused controversy as to who would take care of the road. When Hurricane Sandy came through and dumped 10 inches of rain in the area, we almost lost the road. The property owner was absent and water was cresting the road. The county executive had to get approval from the county attorney, declaring it a public emergency, to pull the gates in the spillway. Once the first gate came out, the water started to drop. That incident spurred the county to acquire legal documents to gain control over the spillway, the operation of the spillway. That document was signed in September 2013. Coming forward, July 13th of 2016, a storm dropped several inches of rain in our area in a short period of time. On the morning of July 14th, the water was over the road and the road washed out. No gates were removed. In our efforts to have the road and dam rebuilt, the Atkins Museum agreed to provide the county with an easement dated 11/29/16 to work on the road and secure the road bed. We were told work would begin immediately. The Atkins Museum has been affected by this closure. The signs in the middle of Barron Creek Road block access to some of our property. There is about 3/4 of an acre of dead trees from the water running into the property. It's not very appealing if we want to sell it, and it affects the value of the property. Secondly, the hardware store has also been affected by the road closure. Access to our store from the north side of the pond has been made less convenient. Some customers don't come as often or not at all. The seniors don't like driving on Route 50. At the store, we get questions every day, when's the road getting fixed? My response is always, call the executive's office, but I understand I need to amend that to include the council. Most people won't call because they've already vented to us. I have spoken to leaders of the three fire companies, Mardella, Hebron, and Sharp Town, about their thoughts on Barron Creek Road. All want it back to add another accessway to the northwest side of the county, and also that they would like to have a water source there. I've spoken to the sheriff, and he would like to see the road fixed to help with public safety. That was just a few phone calls to get some opinions. So please, talk to the residents, the businesses, and other organizations in the area to see what their thoughts are about getting Barron Creek Road fixed. The cost of this repair has at least doubled over the last eight years that it's been washed out. Before the cost continues to rise, please, let's make it a priority and get it done. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Council President. First thing I wanted, my name's Bob Vamiter, 9438 Athel Road, Mardella Springs, Maryland. I first want to commend the council, and this is with all sincerity, the fine job that has been done on Athel Road. I'm actually thankful it wasn't like that when I was a teenager, because I'd have been in trouble. The repaving of that road is, it puts it on par with anything in the county. I commend you. I assure you, I had mentioned this a couple of weeks ago to Mr. Benson, he can assure you that, that comment, those comments were made to him as well. The other thing I need to address or I want to support is Mr. Kenny's comments on Barron Creek Road. We were assured, our community was assured this road was going to be repaired. I recognize that there are other individuals, and I respect their position, that they would rather not see it repaired. But I ask you, in all sincerity, is this the standard of care and the way we're going to address this type of issue forward in our county? And I use as an example, it could just have easily been den ditch, and I know none of you know where that's at probably, but it's on Athel Road. It can, it's a spur of the creek, and it can wash out. If we get another six-inch rain in an hour, you could lose a lot, potentially lose a lot of roadway in this county. Would we repair with Tipton Creek Bridge, just rebuilt that a few years back? The causeway there, many times I've seen it underwater, if we get a south wind and heavy rains, that could go. Are we going to repair that, or are we just going to keep putting it off? What is the formula? And I say this not to be confrontational, but to ask you to think about, what is the formula for having a roadway repaired? If you lost Tony Tank Bridge, how long would you take to get that back up? Or if we lost the bridge on Spry Armor, all these are in your county inventory, and I could go on and on with different, with different bridges and roadways that could be lost as a result of water. This does affect the Mardella community. There's a lot of us that do use or would like to continue to use that roadway if it were repaired. And I thank you very much for your time and ask you to put it into budget. I understand budgetary constraints, but if we could get it in next year with certainty that it's going to get done, we would greatly appreciate it.
Mikel Darlene, Wacomiko County. First, I want to say thank you for the productive discussions about Conley Mill Park at the last meeting. Council members Hastings, Baker, Holloway, and Shields, I deeply appreciate your calls for clarity and solutions. Fencing the borrow pit and opening the remaining acreage is fiscally responsible, reduces liability, and fulfills promises made to residents. We can't overlook the importance of trust in government. When promises are made, they need to be kept, not broken. The promise of Conley Mill Park was never in question until September 2023, when the MOU for Safari Decore was signed. Unfortunately, our county executive continues to spread misinformation about this even after being shown objective documentation disproving her claims. This began in April when constituents emailed the executive urging her to respect the original vision for the park. She responded with a blanket email claiming the county council was the reason it didn't move forward in 2021. President Cannon corrected this publicly on April 26, stating that there couldn't be anything further from the truth and that the council has always supported the park. He urged everyone to look at the previous CIP, which was submitted by Giordano, showing the council authorized $100,000 for the park in 2027. Yet, the misinformation continues. In a podcast interview last week, she once again blamed the council and President Cannon for the park being removed. She claims this happened before she took office, but her first CIP included it. It was not removed until after the Safari MOU. She claims it was removed by John Posoda with the decision not to pursue a conversion of POS funds, but that's not true. John Posoda not only kept Conley Mill Park on the CIP, it was escalated to the Tri-County Council SED's document after the conversion was abandoned. Her claim is also in conflict with Pam Olin's statement from August 20th that the park was never taken off, it was simply behind other parks. The executive claimed that the park could not be considered for at least 14 years, while Pam Olin stated that mining in the park are not mutually exclusive, funding just needs to be found. I know proposals by the council to move funds for this purpose were shot down earlier this year by the executive. We've written many letters to the executive seeking resolution. Her responses make one thing clear, she's looking for problems, not solutions. That's why we keep showing up here. We want solutions that work for all of Wacomiko County. The executive says her word is her bond, but she's broke it on Conley Mill Park. She's weaponized her office to denigrate those who stand up for the promise that was made, causing us fear and exercising our right to free speech, and even in entering this building. These fears were proven true at the last meeting when my neighbor was falsely accused of assault. Our issue with the park should be simple to resolve. Instead, it's been met with lies, intimidation, and harassment. Seven months ago, I described a frightening verbally assaulted phone call from the executive. Nothing was done. Now my neighbors are falsely accused, and the misinformation continues. How is this not a breach of ethics? How can this be allowed to continue? All I can do is shine light on it, but I ask for all of you that are listening to see the truth and stand against this. We need to be able to trust our elected officials, not fear them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Noel Quinton, I'm a resident of the community of San Domingo, and I simply want to make comments on the repair of the Barron Creek Road. San Domingo is a little bit between Sharp Town and Mardella Springs, but for those of us who live in the community of San Domingo, access to Mardella and particularly the conveniences of the hardware store drastically changed or ended when the road at Barron Creek was washed out, as has been stated. So I ask you to please consider the repairs to that road, simply because it is a part of the community at large of the northwestern part of Wacomiko County. Those of us who use the services of the hardware store are now, we adjusted our mode of travel to either use the Old Railroad to go through the intersection of the Rice Market and then go west on Route 50 toward Mardella, or we went down 54 to 13, and then through the intersection there at 313 and 50, we went, would head toward Salisbury to get to the services offered by the hardware store. I've lived in that area all my life, as many other people who make comments to me, and it's simply an inconvenience not to be able to go to daily activities that occur in and around that part of northwestern part of Wacomiko County, getting things we need back and forth that's available at the hardware store. It means now we need to decide to head to Salisbury, head to Delmar, or elsewhere, as opposed to the things that we grew up with, simply going across Barron Creek Road. I ask you to please consider that as part of the community, that is, the northwestern part of Wacomiko County and Mardella Springs area. It's more than just repairing that bridge, it's really keeping our community at large intact, where we all have a relationship with, with all the people that live in the rural area there. I assume that many people that live in the new developments on 54 also have to compete with the traffic on 54 and Old Railroad or 313 up and down US 50 as traffic in the summer times going back and forth to Ocean City. For us, it was a matter of simply going to Sneeden Church Road and crossing Barron Creek Road for many, many years that no longer exists, and we ask for your consideration to please put that back in service for us so that our community can be restored and it becomes a daily activity for us to use the conveniences that is available to us in the local area of Mardella, particularly at the hardware store, and I thank you for your attention.
Good evening, Mike Goldberg, Delmar. As many of you are aware, following the August 20 council meeting, a county employee, Heather Langford, petitioned the court for a peace order against me. In that petition, she swore under penalty of perjury that I assaulted her in the council chambers by allegedly frisbee-throwing a piece of paper, striking her in the chest. My home was visited twice by deputies, and I was required to make two court appearances over the course of a week. I had to retain legal counsel at considerable expense, and Ms. Langford was represented by the county attorney's office. Only after video evidence was discovered proving indisputably that no assault had taken place and that I had only gently placed a single sheet of paper from the campaign finance disclosure on Ms. Langford's lap as I exited the council chambers, did Ms. Langford withdraw the peace order, the peace order petition, and the case was closed. But it was only by the grace of God that the PAC 14 video captured this moment, proving that Ms. Langford's allegations were false. The disclosure page handed off to Ms. Langford proved that Eastern Shore undercover made a $3,500 contribution to the executive's campaign despite their denials. During this eight-day period, I could not enter this building for any reason. The actions of Ms. Langford and the executive's office, along with Ms. Langford's representation by the county, by the county attorney's office, was an attempt to use the judicial system to silence my First Amendment right of political speech. This was not the first time the executive's office has made such attempts. The office of the county executive is being weaponized against citizens and communities. Too much power has been concentrated in the office of county executive, and it is being abused shamelessly. This is why we must vote for the Question Day Charter amendment to stop these abuses of power. The so-called balance of power is only an illusion because the executive holds most of the cards. We will only be safe from such abuses when power is distributed among seven diverse members of this county council, each member of which represents the unique interests of their individual districts. Today, I was the target, tomorrow it could be you if you dare to disagree with the county executive. I must add that ESU, which is under contract with the county executive to disseminate information to the public, published an article that distorts virtually every fact I've described. I wrote to ESU last week advising of the misinformation that was purveyed. Their knowledge of the facts cannot be denied because they were so advised. I requested that the inaccurate statements be retracted, but received no response, nor has a retraction been published. Now I must ask the county council, what actions will be taken to correct these great wrongs? You must not allow this injustice to stand, and I urge you to take the strongest possible action against those who are responsible. All of the provable, provable facts of this incident can be viewed on episode eight of the Open Agenda Show on PAC 14 and YouTube. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg.
Good evening, council. My name is Monica Brooks, and I'm a resident of Wacomiko County. I'm also president of Wacomiko County and double ACP. I first want to say thank you so much for just blessing Lori Carter. I mean, she is a jewel to this county, and she keeps her head down, she never looks for accolades, she just is a light here, so thank you for that. I did want to, in response to questions by Councilwoman Shields about the charging boards, the report that came out last year, because it was very difficult to get play-by-play throughout the year, the report that eventually came out for 2023, there were 17 cases listed. Out of the 17, it was 60% of them were found, were shown to have no merit, and 2%, less than 2% actually, were found to have some sort of merit, and it was considered discourteous behavior. I know personally, two things. One, we receive so many phone calls from people that have had issues and incidents with SPD, Sheriff's Office, and Maryland State Police. Many of those people have not gone to these boards because they have had fear of retaliation. Some of them, who finally did go to bring their cases that had validity, were all found unfounded, or there was no response. One of the cases we assisted to bring was reviewed by Fruitland Police Department, and they told us they would respond to us, and that was about four months ago. We've heard absolutely nothing. So beyond that, when you talked about having people recommended for that board, we have recommended several people for that board, different people, different walks of life, and not one of those people were selected. However, several of the people on these boards are being reappointed. I don't understand why people are being reappointed when there's no opportunity for new people to get appointed. So there's a problem there, we have brought it up multiple times, and we would love to see some diversity happening in that space, and when I say diversity, it has nothing to do with race, has nothing to do with gender, it has, has something to do with new opportunities for the community to participate in this very important space that they were granted by the law, to make sure that the law enforcement is doing its job and that citizens can count on them, and if they have an issue, that they have a recourse, because in the past, they were too fearful and they had nowhere to go. The police were policing themselves, but this, these boards are supposed to give people an opportunity to have their voices heard, so we would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks.
Hi, Holly Campbell, resident of Wacomiko County and Shadow Hills. I don't want to be here tonight again, but I felt like I needed to be here again after what happened with Mike Goldberg, and for the record, I didn't even know Mike until And for the record, I didn't even know Mike until this happened. We live three doors away from each other. I didn't even know Mike. This is the third time, this arrest, the cops coming to Mike's house, this is the third time there was an incident with Mike, that nothing happened. And honestly, now I'm scared to even come here and say anything, and my other neighbors, one after another, are like, I'm not setting foot in the council anymore. And that peace order, if it had gone through, and if there wasn't a video proof of what happened to Mike the other day, they would have been probably successful with that peace order. And then Mike couldn't come in this building, and he couldn't come here, and he couldn't speak, and that's extremely disturbing. Okay? So I'm here because that's wrong, that shouldn't happen, and I don't think Mike even said that that's the third time, but that was the third incident that he was called into question on, something that really didn't happen. I think once downstairs in this building, once out of the quarry on the right of way, and now this. And I've been on the street when I've seen the cops come these times, and I think it's Something has to be done. I don't know if it's possible to have a town hall meeting, this just came to me sitting here, but like, can there be a town hall meeting that Julie and Bunky and Steve Miller and the county council and our neighborhood come to where actual facts could be discussed, and this could be, like, some progress could happen? I had a pretty good conversation with Barry Beecham the other day. I think Barry's a good problem solver, and, you know, he's like, what are some solutions? You know, and in a short conversation with Barry, you know, his first thing to me was, what are you guys looking for? What's the solutions? I'm like, great, somebody who's willing to say, what are solutions, not problems, you know? And we had a really good conversation, which I hope to continue. But I would like to put that out there. We've brought it up a couple of times, but this does keep going back and forth. And the interview that came out with Eastern Shore Undercover again the other day, and Julie, I hate to even talk about, but they did bring up Shadow Hills again, they did bring up the park and the controversy about the park, and the conversation was completely butchered. The facts are completely butchered, and I could go over them, but I'm going to run out of time. But Steve Miller, I know, has background, a lot of background on this property, and I think if we could have that town hall, that conversations, these actual truths could, like, come to light, and we can maybe get some actual progress on what's happening at the mining site, fencing it off and opening the park up, and the actual fact that that could and should be happening right now. And I won't even get into the rest of it. There were so many misstatements in that interview, it would take probably an hour, probably, to even get through it. I have bullet points, but I wanted to kind of comment about what had happened to Mike and the fact that, you know, if the attacks happen and we can't come and we can't speak publicly, I really don't know where our democracy is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Evening, Joe Venosa, Wacomico County. You know, amazing, four hours ago, I was on the beach at Assateague, and I thought, wow, what a beautiful existence, totally placid, no people around, and here we are, back to reality. It's a shame when you think about it, because of all the time that we unfortunately have to spend putting out fires and fighting over things that really shouldn't be fought over. But when injustices occur and when the wheels of government are weaponized against the very people who are the basis of that government, it's a very, very frightening and disgusting time to be a resident here. What Ms. Campbell stated a few minutes ago about being afraid to speak out and having fear, that is an unfortunate echo of many people in this community, particularly those that currently work for the county government. As of right now, we have more than two dozen current and former employees who have reached out to our email account stating specific examples of how they are afraid for their jobs, financially squeezed because of the pressure from the county executive, and are contemplating new careers if they can financially get out from their situation. Others are talking about retirement, longstanding employees. This is why, in part, our solid waste and roads division is completely gutted, totally gutted. Ask anybody who'll tell you the truth, who's out of a position of not being pressured by the county executive, and they'll tell you the same thing. All this has the same thing in common. We are in a system of government in Wacomico County where the county executive office, even compared to other counties that have this system, has far more unchecked, vague, and ill-defined power to do these things. Everybody who is from Shadow Hills can attest to that. Mr. Goldberg, unfortunately, can attest to that on multiple occasions. I highly recommend people watch the news story tonight on WBSC that goes into this, as well as our own show, Open Agenda. But I encourage anybody willing to speak out to come and provide that testimony on the abuse that they've suffered at the hands of this county executive system on our show, Open Agenda. Because I'm many things, but one thing for sure is my mom didn't raise me to run away. And so you have to stand up to bullies wherever they may be, including at the highest office in this county. And so one of the best things we can do until we vote in November for the charter amendment is simply to speak out publicly, to let people know just what is really going on at the highest levels of our county government in that executive office, because none of it is good, and the people are suffering, and that has to be rectified. Thank you.
Ms. Venosa.
Hello. My name is Alex McCray. I'm a Wacomico County resident, also teach at Mardella Middle and High School. I'm here to speak about the Baron Creek Dam project. I would advocate for it to be reinstated. Two issues are traffic. As, I'm not certain what the future plans are for Mardella Middle and High School, but in the current situation, traffic does back up on 54 while parents are waiting to come in to pick up their children. Any that were coming on the westbound side of 50 could take that side road, and then they'd be able to stack up on that side of 54 instead of backing up almost to the light and then causing problems out that way. Sharp Town, not Sharp Town, it is northwestern, could also benefit from the alleviation of traffic, because they also, the times are staggered because the elementary school and the high, middle high school don't open at the same time. So there is some staggered time there. However, it would alleviate, it would help reduce some of that traffic at the corner. The other thing is that Baron Creek Dam Road would provide some sort of access for agricultural vehicles to get across and provide them access to properties up and down 54, and they wouldn't have to go to the light or over to Rice Market. And then there's two reasons. If I don't have to go, I ride my bike to work a lot, and if I don't have to go through the light, I'm sure that my principal, Liza Hastings, would be happy to see me on time more often to work. And then the final reason, which is completely selfish, is if you, I know you got that infrastructure money burning a hole in your pocket, and if you spend money on this road, then you won't spend money paving all those beautiful gravel roads that I like to ride my bike on. So that's, but I would advocate for you to please repair that road for a variety of reasons. Thank you.
Very much.
Hello, Holly Ortel again, Wacomico County resident. This has nothing to do with the fire department. Saturday afternoon, I was in my car in Salisbury, leaving TSC, and I was getting out on 13. And if there was one, there was, I'd gone close to about 60, 75 dirt bikes, four-wheelers, coming down 13 from Delmar, heading, what, which way would that be? South, I guess. People were driving off the road. People were going on the other side of the street. I called the police. I was telling the state police, because they came past their barracks, I got hung up on. I guess their phones were blowing up. I called the Salisbury City Police. Nothing they can do. They said our hands are tied, you know, because they're worried about a lawsuit if someone gets hurt. But yet, here, I'm not a criminal, and I'm not saying that these people are criminals, but they have criminal-like behavior. They are on a, they're on a road. Somebody put a video up, and then I shared it. All these dirt bikes and four-wheelers blocking off, well, they were blocking off a road right down near Title Health. What if one of the fire companies that I represent had one of your loved ones in the back of the medic, and they couldn't get there into the emergency room? That's not cool. I don't know what the council can do, if they can do anything. I don't know what the state's attorney can do, and I hate to, you know, I see you sitting there, but something has to be done. This is a problem on the other side of the bridge in Baltimore City, a very bad problem. You know, as I was, I did not go off this, I did not go off the road. I'm not that girl. I'm just not. I kept driving. I had a motorcyclist that was taunting me on the right-hand side. I put my signal light on to get out there on 50. What if I would have hit him? I am the one charged. That's not right, but my biggest concern is it's public safety, and it's a safety for the emergency responders coming into the hospital, and I, hopefully, there was no medics that were in route to the hospital, but they shut the street down, they're doing, what are they called, doughnuts on their dirt bikes in the middle of the street, right in front of Title Health. I didn't see any police around. Once again, I don't know if there's anything that y'all can do, but I truly would appreciate it if there is something. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, longtime county and Salisbury resident. So much to talk about, so little time, but I'm going to waste some of it by just pointing out, Mr. Cannon, I'm sure knows why I'm wearing blue and white tonight. Got 11 more games before we get into the playoffs, but we are. Anyway, just real quickly, hopscotching, I want to kind of hopscotch on Mr. Goldberg's comment about what has happened to him and the situation in court, and also, my curiosity, since Ms. Langford was represented by Illuminati, Mr. Illuminati, who's a part of the county law department firm, is there any connection there? I think a lot of people want to know. Did the county provide that representation for her, and if so, what's it costing? I'll let it go at that. I really came here to talk about what we're beginning to see in response to our effort to have Question A on the ballot in November. That's the issue about the county form of government and whether we should continue with the county executive. And what we're beginning to see is some pretty much ridiculous comments being made in opposition to it. We know where they're coming from. When you leave the building tonight, just go look at the Republican headquarters down here on Main Street. There's no sign up even for Hogan, at least there wasn't tonight, maybe it fell down. But there's a sign up about opposition to Question A. There's also a sign up for Ms. Giordano, as if she were running this year, which, of course, she's not. And I also want to address something that was in last week's Salisbury Independent by another person named Taylor, no relation, and I applaud and congratulate the Independent for printing that, because let's find out what they're trying to throw. Let's look at the mud that's being thrown. And in that regard, I have sent to the Independent, and they've put in this week's edition, a response to that. And with so little time, I'll go through it real quickly, but the title of it was, "Vote No on Question A," and then it followed up with, "Well, you'll never get a chance again. If Question A passes, you'll never get another chance," which is malarkey. It's on the ballot as a result of a resolution by the council, and the voters can vote it up or down. The other, Mr. Taylor, also said it's a power grab by the council. Well, it's a weird power grab when it has to be voted on by the voters. This is the kind of malarkey we're getting. There's another blogger who's allied with the group. He put something up, I was away at the time, that said, "The county executive appoints the sheriff and the judges." Well, I mean, this is total poppycock. I understand it was taken down pretty quickly after somebody pointed out how ridiculous it was, but that's what we're seeing, and that's what we're going to continue to see. So batten down the hatches, vote for Question A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Charles Wright, Hebron, Maryland, Wacomico County. I'm speaking on the necessity of Baron Creek Road. So a question, how many of you guys know, how many of you know how many crossover, direct crossover intersections there are from Hebron to Vienna? And I'll tell you, there's three. Old Railroad, the light at Mardella, and Riverton Road. So in Old Railroad, if the state determines that it's not feasible for a light, there'll be two. So as a farmer, we have to traverse down Route 50 and to wherever the next intersection is, instead of being able to go straight across. It's a hazard, we're dealing with people, you know, our area's growing. Everybody's trying to get somewhere 15 minutes early, and they leave 10 minutes late, and there I am in the road. Man, this dude is holding me up. Now, he's feeding me, I forgot that, but, you know, he's holding me up. So that, having an access across is necessity, and this used to be an access to get through there. Now, you can say it's not that wide. It's wide enough. We have to block roads off all the time now, send a pickup ahead, block the road off, same thing we would do there. This calls in congestion at Old Railroad, ties in with that, people used to cut through there. I mean, when I went to high school, take my kids, that's how I used to cut in, and it's a disaster at Mardella High School, Middleland High, in the morning and afternoon, with everybody picking up their kids and taking off. It would open up access for the EMT, firemen, our police force, enable them to get to that school quicker if there was an incident. The road was mentioned before, it's been used for the customers on the northwest side of the county to get to the hardware store. And you, you know, you can say, hey, there's another way to get there, and there is, but you have to get on 50. If you don't have to do that all the time, you don't know what it's like. I mean, we live on it, go across it every day, and it's life in your own hands a lot of times, because nobody's worried about you, you have to work for yourself. But it's along that lines, is if it's an inconvenience, I mean, we're in the world of Amazon, internet sales, so people can, if it's an inconvenience, that's going to affect a small business. And that small business, they're the ones giving the kids at the ballpark t-shirts, helping them out, not Amazon. Those businesses are the ones paying whatever new fees we need to come up with to keep the county going, property taxes. And I believe those folks that live along that pond are probably still paying for waterfront property. Now, we still don't mind taking that money, but we're not providing, you know, whether it's waterfront or not. I mean, I understand it's easy to keep kicking the can down the road, but maybe it's because it doesn't affect you, but it affects all of us on the northwest side. So all the comments before, I support, and just like to see this back on track for the taxpayers in our area. Thank you.
Ms. Wright.
I understand that dirt bikes are a symbol of lawlessness. I get it, and I'm not the best person to speak on it. So forgive me if, and the sheriff will correct me if I misspeak, I'm certain. So it is a liability issue, quite simply. It's an insurance issue. Police officers are told that they are to document they're not engaging in a pursuit, that for their own safety, for their own coverage, they are to document ending a pursuit, to make sure that they are not sued, not covered, or not found liable in that way. It's not just an insurance problem, but it is quite literally a criminal liability potential for law enforcement officers. It is, if a civilian is killed, if the dirt biker is killed, somebody's going to point to that law enforcement killed, somebody's going to point to that law enforcement officer initiating a pursuit and looking to blame that police officer. And if it's your loved one that's killed, you'd be doing that too. It's, it's just how it is, especially if your loved one's a civilian. It's not a popular conversation, but it's where we are politically in the state of Maryland. It, it just is what it is. Other jurisdictions are pursuing. Other jurisdictions across this country are pursuing. They're stop sticking, as I understand it, dirt bikes. And, and I'm not going to take a position, but I'm saying that law enforcement officers don't want to go to jail, and I can't blame them. So you can damn law enforcement officers all you want, but they got mortgages to pay, they got mouths to feed, they got wives and families to go home to. It is that simple. So we can point fingers and we can blame all we want, but there are realities to their professions. So that's my piece. I don't know what the sheriff would say, but we need to stop pointing fingers and have a meaningful conversation. One more thing I want to say. We were out. I was not, but my people were out last night. Our motor vehicle fatalities are through the roof. We're having multiple motor vehicle fatalities every month. Don't drink and drive. Don't smoke and drive. Be smart. Your friends end up killed. Kids end up killed. God bless volunteer fire companies. Allen Fire Company was out last night. The horrific nature of the things that they and law enforcement officers and my prosecutors have to witness because somebody wants to be careless. People are hurting. They're hurting each other. Let's do better.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam State's Attorney.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. I want to talk about Barron Creek Road real quick. Be the minority in the group tonight. But let's start with Old Railroad Road and Route 50. The state right now is trying to figure out what they're going to do at that intersection. Whether they're going to make you make right-hand J-turns, go up and make U-turns and come back, or whether they're going to put a stoplight up, they haven't decided. If you open Barron Creek Road up again, you are bringing Old Railroad's problem, once it hopefully is solved, down to Barron Creek Road. Because they're going to be cutting across Barron Creek Road, and you're going to have to have a stoplight put up there, or you're going to have to have J-turns put up there because the traffic has increased immensely in the past eight years. You have a DAP tank farm on the south side of Route 50 that is bringing out 20 to 30 tractor trailer loads a day in that intersection. Luckily, right now, the intersection is wide enough for the truck to get in it and see what's coming, but that's only because one side of the road can't get across. The other thing you have to think about when you're reconfiguring that intersection is that in order to get to the hardware store on a county road or on a state road, you have to travel east in a westbound turn lane. There is no frontage of Barron Creek Road to the hardware store. There's a lot of work that has to be done. Just to clarify a few things, a couple of weeks ago, the council voted six to one to remove Barron Creek Road from the Maryland State Priority Transportation List. The reason that was done is for six years, the county has had money in the budget to repair Barron Creek Road. Three county executives have been in place to replace Barron Creek Road with money in the budget. $257,000 was spent for plans and drawings to repair Barron Creek Road. All the permits, all the plans, all of the architectural drawings have now expired. All that would have to be redone again. Wycomico County is not the richest county in the world, and there's a lot of things that need to be done in Wycomico County. But the county executives had the ability and the time to replace the road. They did not. Even though they may have promised to, they didn't. It's time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Here are the public comments.
Hello, Bruce Robson, Wycomico County. And I'm here to talk about an issue, which I guess is sort of a closed issue, and that's the, the gun in parks issue. But, but I really felt a need to have my say about this. I grew up in a hunting family. My father, brother, and mother also were avid hunters, and I encouraged my son to hunt, which he did. I would go along sometimes, sit in the blind and enjoy the outdoors, except for some skeet and target practice. I never carried a gun myself. It just wasn't my thing. But, but I encouraged my son to because what was paramount was respect for safety and the deadly instruments that were carried. It was assumed that we humans are capable of doing stupid things when things get exciting. I felt it was a good way to teach responsibility to my son. During discussion of this legislation, it was averred that the public is safer when they're, safer when there are gun carrying citizens in addition to law enforcement. These citizens get deep training and also undergo background checks, et cetera. For me personally, I feel less safe knowing there are people, maybe here, who have, who are carrying guns, who are not law enforcement. I spoke with a high-ranking local law enforcement official. He confirmed that police officers who discharge a weapon while on duty, I might not have the exact phrasing right here, immediately are off active duty until an investigation confirms the action was justified. This even implies when there is an attacking animal involved. Why? Because officers are indeed human, and all the training they get does not guarantee horrible mistakes are not paid, not made. This is with all the training that police officers go through, I'm sure, on an annual basis. This person shared with me an instance where in an intensely violent situation, an officer had no recollection of having fired their weapon at someone, which they had. And I'm not blaming the officer, again, we're human. It was also said that the mass shootings, was also said during discussions, that the mass shooting where an armed civilian shot and killed the shooter is an example of increased safety. Yet four people were killed that day by gunfire before the shooter was, was killed. I wonder if the mothers, fathers, siblings of the dead felt gratified that no more were killed, or maybe wished that person did not have a gun. During public comments, a speaker said that it is a fact that places with looser gun laws have less gun violence. I was suspect, and the sources I consulted contradicted this assertion. From every town for gun, excuse me, for several different places, I just have very little time, so I'm going to keep going here. The eight states with the toughest gunsaw, toughest safety laws had 7.7 gun deaths per 100,000 residents, whereas the 17 with the laxest gun safety, safety laws had 20, almost three times as much. The U.S., which has more guns than people, among 65 high-income countries, had the seventh most homicides due to firearms. Every day, more than 100 people, 120 people in America are killed with guns. The research shows that common sense public safety laws can reduce gun violence and save lives. Texas had laxer gun laws now than in the late 1800s. I believe, because back then, there was some common sense that told them that the rate of gun violence was crazy and they did something about it. In the future, I implore you to consider other perspectives on this very sensitive subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robson.
Hi, my name is James Dullin from Wycomico County. Got a few unorganized thoughts about the Connolly Mill Park topic. I've been hearing even recently that this site is a work site. And that just really bugs me because it's 234 acres. I, I don't think that, maybe the public may think that, that it's a work site because someone said it. But there's 55 acres there that's, I think, in some exclusion zone where they're allowed to do the landfill mining for soil. That's the work site. The other 179 acres, I, I don't think are a work site. I mean, that's forest, it's streams, it's, you know, space. So it's a big misconception, I think, that it's being told on, on radio channels or, or podcasts that this is a work site. It's a work site. Just believe us, it's a work site. It's, it's not. I, I don't think any of us who are friends, friends of Connolly Mill Park want the public walking around on the 55-acre work site right now. It's providing a very good resource for our county, and it will for many years, we're told. We don't want people on that work site. I don't, I don't think anyone does, you know. Open up the rest, though. We've got 179 acres of forest. It connects with the, is it the Naylor Mill Forest or the, the Henry S. Parker complex there? Like, open that up. I know at the last meeting, a lot of, of the council members spoke about a fence or, you know, the possibilities of bringing in parks, wrecking tourism. I think that's a good idea. Let's see. Some other misconceptions that I've heard going around recently still that the park idea was killed by either this council or previous council, partial council and the president. And that's not true. Just recently, I think in, in April, at the comptrollers meeting, President Cannon reiterated that fact that, you know, you guys aren't in support of this park. And that the park was killed, someone said, that when the project or program open space conversion didn't go through with West Metro Corps. Well, this council wanted Connolly Mill Park to have its own program open space funding. There's equal support for West Metro Corps and Connolly Mill Park. That keeps getting reiterated that somehow that, the park was canceled. I agree with Holly, who spoke recently about a town hall. I think that's great. I think we should talk with the executive and the council and the people. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dullin. Here are the public comments. Seeing nothing, that concludes public comments. Council comments. Shane?
So I'm going to apologize in advance. I'm not usually too long-winded when it comes to council comments, but tonight I'm going to be. So obviously, I was here at the last council meeting. Didn't see anything happen, didn't know about anything happening in the council chambers. The next day or the day after, Mike Goldberg called me up and said, hey, I had a deputy visit my home. Says I committed an act of assault and aggression in the council chambers. You know, and I said, sorry to hear about that, Mike, and, you know, anything you need from the council or, you know, whatever. And he was really going through a lot, trying to figure out his way, so on and so forth. Well, come to find out, there was video of this alleged assault. And I watched the video clearly. Now, I'm in law enforcement, so I wanted to see, hey, who's telling the truth? There's always two sides. Clearly, there was no assault. So getting into this, I wanted, I wanted to clear a few things up. I did have a correspondence with Mr. Campbell of Eastern Shore Undercover after a post that he had put up. And I'm going to read, I'm going to read it, read what he, what he put up. Says violence and intimidation in the county council chambers. In a disturbing turn of events, the activist group recently made a scene in the Wycomico County Council Chambers where a member of the group allegedly assaulted a Wycomico County employee, throwing paper at a county employee in an angry manner and engaged in a series of intimidating actions against other staff members. According to eyewitness accounts, the member confronted the employee in a heated argument over a policy disagreement during which the paper was thrown and nearly striking a government employee. Under Maryland law, the crime of assault happens when someone makes or attempts to make offensive contact with another. The involvement of the county council president, vice president, and two other members of this group has further fueled tensions. Their association with an organization accused of such behavior has drawn sharp criticism from these elected officials and the public, who are demanding accountability and transparency from their elected officials. The incident has sparked outrage amongst local government officials and residents, with many calling for legal action against those involved. County Executive Julie Giordano, the primary target of this group's activism, has condemned the violence, emphasizing the need for civil discourse and disrespect for the democratic process. "We cannot tolerate actions that threaten the safety and integrity of our government institutions or its employees," Julie Giordano said in a statement. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I watched that video, and I've got permission to use Mr. Goldberg's name. I won't mention the county employee. Mr. Goldberg walked through here, set a piece of paper down in this county employee's lap and exited. Now, there was no audio, but I didn't see Mr. Look, I'm not saying that there was or wasn't discussion because you couldn't hear it. You could only see. But that, that was the movement. Now, I have a problem as a law enforcement officer of 25 years, plus or minus. When you make an accusation and you call the sheriff's office and have a deputy take a report for assault, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big deal in my world, okay? Then you go to a commissioner's office, because that's where we go to get peace orders and protective orders that are district court, and you swear under oath that these things happen, and they issue an interim peace order against a civilian of Wycomico County. For that civilian to have to go through having a deputy sheriff come to his home, for that civilian to have to go out and hire an attorney, I'm not going to say the figure out of respect for Mr. Goldberg, but it was a pretty large figure, to defend himself on something he didn't even do, go to court twice, not knowing, because we all think the worst, right? We don't know what's going to happen. Am I going to go to jail? Am I going to be embarrassed? Is anybody going to see me? He went through all of this. This is a county employee that did this. I want answers. This council wants answers. Nobody, whether you are a county employer or not, should put anybody in that situation where you call police officers to your home and you go to a district court commissioner's office and you swear out, God forbid, I, I don't know if charges were applied for or not, no way of knowing that, but you ask a commissioner for protection and get a peace order. To me, it's, it's outrageous, outrageous. Now, I know the county attorney represented this county employee in court. I have yet to find out if this county attorney was hired on the side or through the county and the county footed that bill. But if the county footed that bill, I will be in full support of doing whatever it takes to right these wrongs and make sure that Mr. Goldberg is totally taken care of. Because by implementing a county employee while on duty and lying and causing him to spend thousands of dollars on his own when he did nothing wrong, I will be in full support of whatever it takes to get you reimbursed and get you righted. On another note, that's enough about the Eastern Shore. Oh, oh, no, I got a little bit more about the Eastern Shore undercover thing. So I got a little off topic. Me thinking, well, maybe Mr. Campbell was given wrong information. That happens, right? Maybe he was given wrong information. So I thought, send an email to Mr. Campbell and say, hey, now that the video's out, now that the court date's over, now that the county had, or I say county, the county's attorney or this person's attorney withdrew the petition. I'm assuming it was withdrawn because they saw the evidence. There was none. I don't know that, but either way, it was withdrawn. Would you be interested in posting something on Eastern Shore? on Eastern Shore Undercover, basically clearing Mr. Goldberg's name?" And he sent back this to me. "Good morning, happy Friday. I hope everyone enjoyed yesterday's podcast with me and Wacomiko County Executive Julie Giordano. I'm very thankful she took the time to spend with us yesterday and clarified some important information. Speaking of podcasts, Wacomiko County Councilman Shane Baker reached out to us la- last night via a personal email, requesting we have him on the podcast to talk about none other than what I like to refer to as the next attempt at shutting down Eastern Shore Undercover and his idea of encrypting the fire and EMS radios, which would take away the remaining ability for Eastern Shore Undercover to prove info to the community, and more importantly, would make it possible for voluntary, volunteer firefighters in our community from knowing what's going on. I find it unfortunate that a county leader would make such an attempt, which would in essence cause major issues for volunteer fire companies. The Eastern Shore relies heavily on volunteers, and to take the ability away from them and remove their ability to hear what is going on would be detrimental. Again, this is just my opinion. We are very appreciative of all the men and women in the fire services, whether paid or volunteers. Many of them provide us with information on a daily basis, and I think it would be interesting to see what would happen if we didn't have a radio at all. So today, on Friday, I am turning off all Wacomiko County radios and relying one hundred percent on information relayed to me from my network of friends. This will be interesting, but it is a good measuring tool for what would be likely, what would be like if the, if the he moves forward with his, uh, have a great Friday after, I'm sorry, I don't wanna misquote him, tool for what it would be like if he moves forward with this. Have a great Friday, everyone." I read that to you, 'cause I wanted you to make a note. What wasn't mentioned in here? The conversation I had about Mike Goldberg and him. Now, this conversation did take place in my email. After the conversation, I had two points I was gonna make with him. One was about writing Mr. Goldberg. The second one was, I see the importance of encryption, that's why I support it. We have volunteers on ambulances now that are being issued bulletproof vests. Bulletproof vests! These are guys, people, people don't always assume that police, fire, and EMS aren't intertwined, but most of the time we, that we are. There's a lot of calls I go on that EMS is being dispatched to, fire services, your car accidents, your, um, mental subjects, people that are having a nervous breakdown. There's a lot of calls that were intertwined. And it, I, I see the importance of just encrypting everything. So I said to him, I extended my hand. I said, "You like to do interviews, you're doing these podcasts now, how would you like to have me on your show, and we'll have a debate about it? We'll s- we'll let the public know your point of view, my point of view?" And he respectfully discl- uh, declined. Now, I also know that Mr. Goldberg, sitting there, told me that he sent a email to Eastern Shore Undercover, asking that he write, you know, write his side of the story, and here's the facts, how it was dismissed from court, and how, how, uh, you know, all the events. He didn't so much as even get a phone call, an email. Now, this is a man, I read you what was said on Eastern Shore Undercover about this violence and intimidation in the council chambers. Now, anybody with any sense, and I would've never mentioned Mr. Goldberg's name unless he let me, anybody with any sense, they start looking at court documents and start looking at, uh, who's always here, and you can put it together. So the majority of people know anyway that it's Mr. Goldberg. So, I, I just want people to realize, there's a lot of information that's getting put out in different places. Do your research. Do your research. See who's telling the truth. See what the facts are. Um, a couple more things I've got. Um, what was the other thing I wanted to hit on? I'm gonna forget it. Oh, here's another thing that I've got a big problem with, huge problem with. Got a text message the other day on my phone, and it was a picture of a truck with a sign in the window, said, "Vote against, question A." And I was like, "Okay, it's, what's the big deal? It's a, it's a sign in the truck. Everybody's got to write, whether you're for question A or against it." He said, "Well, the big deal is, it's parked in a county parking spot." I said, "Where?" "Here at the government building." I said, "That vehicle is parked in a county parking spot?" "Yeah, I just took the picture." Now, I know whose vehicle that is. That's another county employee. So we've got a county employee parking in the county executive's parking spot at the government building, advertising how to vote. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm for question A, but I respect those that aren't. I would like to thank everybody in this room, and, and everybody in Wacomiko County would think that they would not want in a county or state or federal parking spot a billboard put up, whether you like it or whether you don't. It's not the place. It's not the place to advertise by county employees who are working in a county spot. And I've made my, I've made my, uh, feelings known about this, too. But that needs to stop, and that needs to change. I think that's about all I got. Okay, thanks for everybody coming out.
Shane, I'm glad you told us how you really feel.
Well, I did. I don't usually say much, Joe. I had a lot to say tonight.
You accused me last week of not saying anything.
We made up for it.
Another council comment, yes, Shane, you have fifteen seconds.
Number one, um, you know, school has started, and I think you need to watch out for the kids at the bus stops. You know, kids won't follow rules, but just be careful when our children getting off the bus, 'cause everybody can't pick up their children and drop, you know, and, and, uh, drop them off and pick them back up after school. Now, to piggyback on what Shane said, I just want to say, this is a crazy, crazy mess. And I think what has happened, the county employees are being pulled into the craziness, and I think that is wrong. Whether you support the county executive or don't support the county executive, your feelings should be left out the front door or the side door, whatever door you go in to the government building. I think that if you have problems at home and you go to work, you know, you leave that at home. And this, to me, um, if you're the person's ally or you're my ally, keep your feelings to yourself, because we're supposed to be here to solve problems. We're, we're supposed to be here for projects. We're supposed to be here to improve the quality of life for people. We're not supposed to, I can disagree with Julie, and I can speak to her with respect. That is going out the window. And this lying, this social media with this misinformation that gets out all the time, not just Wacomiko County, national, uh, uh, all these issues, this misinformation causes a lot of hatred. And this is what is happening in our county. Some of the national issues is flowing right into our county. Hatred, uh, lying, misinformation, retaliation, employees being scared to say anything. You know, it, they should be able to work in harmony. What happened to that? I'm not against Julie, but I voted for the executive form of government eighteen years ago, and I said, "Well, if it don't work, we can always change it." I'm for it now, because the last, I don't nev- I never saw it work. So, that's why I'm voting for it, but we're letting the people vote for it also. So, if they say they're for executive form of government, whatever the tally comes out, that's what we have to live with. But this hatred and mean-spirateness and, and political stuff that's going on, what's being done for our county? What is being done? What is the schedule of our roads being, being, uh, taken care of? What is the schedule of our ditches being, uh, alleviated, water flowing over? What is, what are we doing with the school system? What are we doing with our parks and recreation in minority districts? What are we doing to help the seniors and the young people and, and thing, and families? What are we doing? We're just arguing back and forth, bringing the employees in it, which they should stay out of it. But that's, that's all I have to say. It's just sad, it's just sadness. It's really sad. And I think that, I try to show everybody respect, just like, um, Laura Carter said, "You treat people how you want to be treated." And that should be our county executive's motto. Treat people the way you want to be treated. Don't lie, don't scheme, don't do this, the big, they used to say, "The good old boy system." Well, it's the good old girl system, and everything's done behind closed doors. So I'm just saying, respect one another. And I don't know how we can get it across to the administrative office. Respect your, your constituents, respect the council, communicate with the council, let us know what's going on before we read it on Facebook or in the newspaper or on podcasts. Now, the man got a podcast, wow, let me look at that stuff. But I'm just saying, we need to get along. And that's how things get done. And as long as this so-called war is going on, we're not, we're not having a war. You know, we're just like the people right there, we don't know what's going on. We read about MOUs and all that. We get along fine. We get along fine. That's all I got to say.
Be good, Jeff. You wanna go? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay.
You got seniority.
Yeah, well, Shane, Shane made a comment a couple weeks ago. He said, "Julie, you ain't had much to say yet." I, I told my wife that. She says, "You've never been accused of not talking enough." But anyway, Parsonsburg's gonna have their hundredth anniversary this Sunday. Um, see some folks from the west side there. You're welcome to come over if you'd like. It's gonna be a nice little parade and everything, and, um, it should be a good time. Labor Day. We just got through Labor Day. I was watching a little piece on TV about Labor Day, and, and they were talking about how it came about, and it celebrated the American worker, and, and I, it's kinda crossed my mind, the, the American men and women that get up every day and go to work and work hard, and whether they work first shift, second shift, third shift, whatever, they're the ones paying the bills. It's like some old country music star said one time, "Don't forget about the people that buy the tickets." And that's what the, um, that's what our citizens do. They buy the tickets and they, they want, they want good government. I'm gonna dive into this, um, question A, um, thing a little bit here tonight. First, I'm gonna make a dis- state a disclaimer. This isn't about one county executive. This is about eighteen years of county executives. Okay? It's, um, not about one person, what one person does, it's just a, a kind of a blanket, um, list. I got this from my experiences, other council members, some at this table, some that's been on the council, that was on the council before, some citizens, and some re- employees, retired and current employees. When, um, when I say in the, when I'm reading this list off, and I say, "Without council approval," that means that the charter required for us to approve this particular item. Some of it I'll call infractions, some of it I'll call charter violations, some of it we'll just say is ethically wrong, just, you know, good common sense things that were, things that were done that didn't make sense. I got about thirty-five, forty items here, I think. I'll probably get more after tonight. And I'm not gonna dive too deep into which each one of these is about, because there's stories behind all of them. Um, and if somebody wants to talk about either thing that I bring up, I'll be glad to talk to them. They can call me or, or whatever. Number one on the list was, is, was, I'll use it that way, and I will not name either county executive, like I said before. Condoning county employees of drinking alcohol while driving county vehicles. Okay. Hiring employees for one department, then paying them from another department of which they were not working. You cannot have correct financial statements when you do that. Okay. On the back of that, allowing work to be done from one department to another without reimbursement of funds. So, it's basically a budget issue. Ignoring employee concerns about being bullied by department heads. Somebody said here tonight how many employees we had lost, um, either through retirement, early retirement, or just quitting. Um, morale's at a all-time low in the county right now. Hiring employees and offering benefit packages not in accordance with the personnel manual. That's been done in the past. Transfer money out of the contingency fund without council approval. So we go back to the charter violation. I'm gonna mark it down, I'm gonna skip this one. This is one that really, this was so upsetting when this happened. Giving a discount to a construction company for tipping fees without legal authority after the council had voted that it shouldn't be done. Now, that showed a favoritism for a business. It showed disrespect for our democracy as far as what the council's purpose is up here. We, um, we voted against that. I don't know if it was a four to three vote, five to two, seven-oh vote, I don't remember, but it was voted down, but it was done anyway. Removed recycling stations without public input or council knowledge. You know, that was, um, that was pretty blatant. I mean, that just, it's like people started calling us on the phone. "What, what happened to the recycling bins? They've disappeared." Closed the county road. I see some folks in there that was here tonight about their road. Closed the county road immediately after a town hall meeting where citizens were told they would have further input, and this didn't have anything to do with your road. This was a road on the east side. We had a town hall meeting, we had probably thirty, forty people show up. They were upset about this road getting closed. We were told that night that, that nothing would happen until we had a, um, another meeting. Well, two or three days later, the road was closed. Now, I've got about two more pages of these. Some of them's pretty serious, some of them's not as serious as others, but it's all shows disrespect to the citizens of Wacomiko County. And I'll go over, we got some more meetings. I'll go over some next week and the week after. But this shows, this shows the, the power, I think is a good word to say, the power that the county executive form of government has. Okay, we'll use, I'll use the one about the, I'm giving the tipping fees, the free tipping fees. If we'd have been a seven-member council form of government and it had been voted against, and say we had a county administrator instead of a county executive, that person would have been fired for doing that. If a majority of the council had voted to not give free tipping, or, uh, discount tipping fees to a special interest, somebody, I guess it was a friend of theirs, maybe, I don't know what the deal was, that county, that county administrator would have been fired, or whoever authorized doing it. Maybe it had been whoever was in charge of the, um, landfill or whatever, but that was done by account, by, by a county executive. So, um, that's the difference. That's the difference in these forms of government. So, I'll leave the, um, rest of the list until next, our next council meeting. And I'm sorry we have to go through this. And Mr. Goldberg, concerning Shane's statement, I'm sorry you had to go through that, but it wasn't us that did it. I want, and you know that. You, you know where it came from. Um, I went through it a couple year ago, or a year ago. I got accused of a crime by someone that was unfounded. So, um, I know how you feel. Some people say, "I know how you feel," well, they really don't until you go through it. So, anyway, thank you for being here again tonight. Okay? That's all I got. That's all I have, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah. Pivot. Depending on what happens with the ballot initiative, it would be interesting to see if it, if it does stay, what we can do as a council to pass a charter amendment to require more transparency as far as public hearings or reports, public reports, quarterly reports or quarterly town halls, something of that nature. And that could be something that would last for multiple executives, not just, obviously, one executive, but future-proof. Those are just ideas. I don't know how this ballot initiative's going to go, but if it stays, we've got to figure out how to, we've got to make some amendments to make it as transparent as, as the people would like to see it. As far as Barron Creek, I understand we had a few people in the audience here tonight that would like to see that back, and I know that is a consensus with the, with the report, the priority letter. I don't think it was voted on or anything. It was more or less just a consensus, whether we were going to take it off or not take it off, and the consensus was to remove it from the priority letter. We just passed that resolution for the priority letter tonight. I would like to see that, maybe that be put back on the priority letter, if that is possible. If not, I, there's nothing else I can do about it, but I don't know if there's, if we even can do that tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll wrap it up. How about that?
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We had a pretty good crowd, full house. We're winding summer down, and schools are in session, so busy, exciting times. Like Shaney said, let's watch out for the kids and the buses, and maybe plan on a little extra time getting to work and things like that. We don't want any incidents to happen. I do want to give a special shout-out to our educators, because they've been waiting all summer for this, I guess. But I know they're getting their classrooms together, and there's a, you know, the college kids are back, and there's, there's a lot of excitement. You know, I heard earlier tonight, the words retaliation intimidation. I can tell you that the threat of retaliation and intimidation is real. I get no less than a dozen contacts every week from current and former county employees who feel they have no recourse. They cannot go to their supervisor, the grievance process is compromised, it has been, this didn't happen last week, we saw this over a year ago. There's only so much we can do. We're a legislative body. Wish we could fix everything, but unfortunately, we're not able to. We're a couple of months away from the election, and with regards to question A, I'm seeing, everybody's seen quite a lot of different information out there, and we're seeing words and phrases like unconstitutional balance of power, checks and balances, and power grab. I like the power grab one, that's a good one. You know, if we look at the facts, 14 counties in the state of Maryland do not have an executive, and yet they still function. 83% of the counties in the entire country do not have an executive, and they still function. So with these statistics in mind that I just shared, either these phrases are not valid, or there's a whole lot of people out there that are just not operating correctly, and I'm pretty sure that's not the case. I encourage everybody to push personalities, emotions, opinions, push that off to the side, check your facts, do your research. Councilman Baker said that earlier. Pick up the phone, send an email, dig down, see what's really right, see what makes sense. I am for, voting for question A. 18 years, it hasn't worked. How much farther down the road are we going to kick the can? Just to test the waters and see if we can get it right, you know? On another note, I want to thank all of the county facilities and the local businesses that have electronic signboards, because they're putting the Wycomico Clean Icon up there about spreading the word about, let's pick up our litter, do better recycling, clean our county up, clean our community up. So if you, thank you. If you have or know of somebody that has an electronic message board at their business, we can send them the logo, we can send them the message. Poe Hank, if you ride down Route 13, Poe Hank has got it on all their stuff. Shorebirds is going to have it. Bruce Robson back there, thank you. We got a lot of local groups out there, getting out there, picking up litter on the weekends, various group efforts, and it, sometimes it feels like you're not making a difference, but, but we are. So we're going to keep at it.
I'm good.
Right? And, Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Vice President Merritt. Under President comments, I'd like to make a couple of comments about Barron Creek. I also, though, would want to address just real quickly, James, and your comments, I appreciate your comments as far as trying to make things, improve things, as you're saying. But, you know, we have, I think, going through numerous councils, not just this council, numerous councils, since 2006, we have been consistently, every election cycle, if not off-year, having amendments put, charter amendments placed on the ballot. And 99% of those amendments were to try to restrict some abuse that we found in the executive branch of government, legitimately trying to resolve some of these issues. So it's been an ongoing process for some time. We had one year where we actually put 13 on the ballot, 13 charter amendments on the ballot, because we, you know, the ship needed to be, you know, adjusted to such a degree. And I'm not quite so sure we've even accomplished that as of now, I think with what we've seen in the last few years. The council, and I felt, the council felt as well, that we only had one recourse, and that was to let the public decide for themselves whether or not they wanted to continue down this road. I witnessed it when I go to Maryland Association of Counties, and they say, what is going on in Wycomico County? I've heard it before, and I'm hearing it again. And it's, it's, you know, somewhat of an embarrassing position to see yourselves in, as Councilwoman Shani Shields said, you know, we don't want a war, we don't like war, so we're trying to fix schools and airports and roads and public safety, that's all my concern is. But I know personally, I spend probably 80% of my time fighting wars and battles, and I really don't appreciate that. I think you see a culmination with Mr. Goldberg's situation, where, you know, you have such an abuse of power that you see something to that effect taking place within county government support. Now, that's all I'm going to say in regard to that. The issue with Barron Creek, we took it out of the priority letter for the Maryland Department of Transportation, because there was, literally, over the last few years, zero commitment on the part of Wycomico County. It was a very hard issue for us to go to the state of Maryland and say, no, put this in your priority, you know, one of your top priorities, because the first thing state says is, well, what are you guys doing? You know, where are your plans? What are you doing? Didn't have it. I couldn't see where, in this year's capital improvement program, there was no funding proposed in this year's CIP for 2025 through 2029. So again, you go to the state and say, this is one of our priorities, they go, how is it a priority? Next five years, you don't plan to spend a dime on this road. So it kind of put us in a position. There was a mention in the CIP about prior appropriations through 2024 of $850,000. I couldn't find that. I went through back, back to 2018, and I could find nothing where there an $850,000 commitment had been made. There was a reference to a new project, Barron Creek, in 2018 with a $500,000 commitment in the CIP, but there was zero in 2019. So it was a little confusing. I also found an expenditure of about $170,000 in 2020. That may have been the architectural planning that Mr. Atkins referenced. So just for the public's reference, because it kind of came out of nowhere that this, that this decision was made directly as a result of the priority letter, but that was the logic behind it. We removed it from the priority letter because it really did not exist as a viable plan in Wycomico County. So I appreciate everybody coming in and sharing their concerns, both in favor and against this, and I'm sure we will continue to work on this as, as time continues and we see how it plays out. So that's all I have to say. I would like to entertain a motion from council to adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to general provisions, Article Section 3-305 B78, as follows, to consult with legal counsel to protect the attorney-client privilege, and to consult with legal counsel to discuss pending litigation to protect the county's legal position. I would remind everyone that after the closed session, council will reconvene and open legislative, legislation once again. I think that's motion. Second. Motion's second. All's a favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Five minutes.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, if you don't mind. We're reconvening in Wycomico County Legislative Session 2024-20 for September 3, 2024. The first item on the agenda for an open work session, we have First Amendment to solar site lease agreements. Thank you. If you would just please, for the public, state your names.
Cam Olin, Finance Director.
Thank you.
Dave Dowse, I'm one of the county attorneys.
Tommy Rudy, Airport Director.
And we have a gentleman from the, the solar company on Zoom.
Okay.
If we need him. So.
Who is on Zoom, so we can?
Michael, and I don't know how to pronounce his last name.
Borkowski.
Borkowski.
Michael, how are you?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Hold on a second. Give us a second, we were looking at some feedback here. Okay. All right, we'll try it again, if you could, Michael.
Uh-oh.
Nope. You know? Michael Borkowski, can you hear me now?
We have you now, Michael. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So council adopted a, the lease originally back in May 2022. Since that time, we had to submit the lease due to the fact that it's going to be next to the airport, obviously, to the FAA. The FAA took almost a year and a half. We got the FAA approval in November of 2023. Since that time, we have been working with the solar company to finalize the lease agreement, and the economic conditions of the country have changed, and the solar industry have changed since May 2022. So since that time, we have been negotiating with them, working on language with our legal counsel, and we also brought in our energy consultant to help us, since we are not experts in energy. And they reviewed this as well, and we feel that there is enough changes that we needed to bring back the lease to council, but we didn't feel the changes were substantive enough that they are changing the economic factors for the reason why we did it in the first place. So the county is still going to be receiving energy credits, which will offset a significant portion of our energy. The dollar amount is slightly more than what it was back in May 2022, but that is also due to rising cost for energy. So we're requesting council to let us advertise for this lease, and I think it has to be advertised for three weeks, and bring it back at the first meeting in November for the changes. And again, first meeting in October, sorry, first meeting in October, so that this project can finally get to the point of actually being constructed, because this would be the last step, basically, is council approving the lease changes.
You're talking about advertising that we signed a lease agreement, not advertising for a new lease agreement with a new company?
No, it's the same company. It's advertising for amendments to the lease agreement, such that we're staying with the same company, the economic factors are still present, and they haven't gone down for the county, and as such, we're asking for the council's approval to allow this lease to move forward, so that we can actually get to the point of this being constructed, and the county to start receiving those economic, those positive economic factors.
Say it was going to cost more, it's going to cost us more, or is we're going to have a larger revenue stream?
It's technically a larger revenue dollar, but the cost of electric has gone up. So, you know, we're paying more for electric now than what we were paying in May of 2022. So yes, the actual absolute revenue number is higher, but our expense is also higher. So.
Any questions? Balance out, so about where it was before?
Yes.
Worse for us or better for us?
As I said, it's about the same, but we felt it was, there was enough.
Slightly higher, but just.
Slightly higher.
Minimally higher.
For who?
Yeah, I can, is it helpful for me to chime in on that at all?
Sure, sir.
Yes. Okay. The, the rent revenue is exactly the same, the pilot revenue is exactly the same, the energy savings increase by approximately $400,000. So over the course of the 35-year lease, it would be approximately $9.4 million worth of energy savings. When you add the rent and the pilot, it comes to about $12.4 million worth of total revenue slash energy savings. The first year, energy savings is approximately $236,000. The first year total revenue with the rent and the pilot is approximately $301,000. And like they said, the, the, there was a slight increase in the cost of the net meter credit, which is, is what is bought, but that is, and that is because the interconnect came back more inexpensive. It took longer than was expected to get, and more costly to get the FAA approval. But that said, the energy prices increased much more than our, our smaller increase in the net meter credit. That's why there's incremental savings.
Can I jump in just for a second? There's, there's three agreements here, and he's mentioned all three of those, but it might be confusing if you're not living with this day-to-day. So there is a lease, and the lease amendment, of course, does have to go through council and be advertised and so forth. The main effect of the lease is to extend out some deadlines that have occurred because of delays in FAA. And the lease also incorporates certain requirements that FAA wanted in here in order to approve the project. So we do have a lease amendment, and we do have a lease. There's another document, which is a net meter power agreement. And essentially, what that says is, we're going to produce all this power, we're going to sell it to DP and L. We get credits as a result of that. You're going to buy our credits for a certain price, and then DP and L is going to reduce your bill by the amount of the credits. And the idea is, we're going to be buying the credits for a dollar, and the amount that we get off from DP and L for each of those credits is $1.20. And it's that delta where we get the energy savings, okay? And we have reviewed this with energy consultants and the like to make sure that the assumptions that are underlying these projections are realistic, and we've been told that they are. And then the third document that's involved is a pilot where the council had previously agreed to a payment in lieu of taxes, and that's not changing, that still is going forward, but it does create another additional stream of income to the county of about $17,500 a year.
So as a reminder from back when we started this two years ago, the solar fields are considered personal property, not real property on the building. Like, they're not, because they can kind of be taken up and moved, they're considered, under Maryland state law, they're considered personal property. So the cost of personal property, as you know, is $2.11 per $100 of assessed value. Thus, council agreed to a pilot concept with this, so that they weren't paying at the full dollar amount, because we are getting this other benefit to us, which, again, is going to offset our electric costs for the county.
What's the upfront cost?
We don't.
There is no upfront cost.
There's no upfront cost to the county. The county is not paying. I mean, we've obviously paid legal fees to review all this stuff, but we aren't paying for any of this to be built.
Okay.
They pay for the solar field to be constructed. And the way they make their money is they're getting a payment in the future, you know, out for a certain number of years for their solar energy.
Who cuts the grass?
There are no grants.
Pardon me?
Goats.
There are no grants.
No, he said, who cuts the grass? Who cuts the grass?
We cut the grass.
Okay. You maintain it all. Okay. All right.
Yes.
And again, as a reminder, this is the field kind of on the corner of Airport Road and Mount Herman Road that the airport and the county own. It is not, it is kind of low lying land, so it, when we have rain, you'll notice that it ponds frequently. We end up with birds using it as a stopping point because it becomes a pond. So again, it's not an ideal spot. And I mean, the FAA would really not like us to build a building there anyways. So it's a, again, we've cleared this now with the FAA, and it's now a, it's a done deal on that side of things. So we're asking for this to move forward.
I have another question. Is this going to be subject to the same zoning as far as buffers and fencing that we have in the county, as far as if farmers want to put it in and all that?
Yes.
So it'll be buffered and there'll be fencing. I know there'll be fencing around it. I assume that. But it will be buffered with trees?
Yes, we put in some landscaping as well.
Responsible for removing it if comes to?
It's part, again, it's like, it's in the lease, and it's also in the county regulations about.
That's what I thought.
About.
Decommissioning.
So that will, that, those rules are all still in place. It just happens to be on our land this time versus somebody else's land.
You have to bond that, right? That's what we did.
They have to bond.
No, I thought, we put that on the back of the, a while back, we put that on the back of the landowner, the bonding.
Yes. No, it's with the developer. It does not, the benefit, the benefit can go to the landowner. So if the, whatever, if the bond is called upon, the landowner can get the proceeds from the bond to have things removed. But it is the developer's responsibility to post that bond.
Don't talk him out of it.
Pardon me?
Don't talk him out of it.
No, I'm not trying to talk him out of it, but we passed out a long time ago that it was on the back of the landowner to furnish the bond. That's in the law.
I believe, you know, you're probably referencing when we were discussing, I think, issues with standalone facilities, things such as that. This is a little bit different. I mean, yeah.
We are the landowner here.
Pardon me?
We are the landowner.
Yeah, what he's saying is, is he's saying, though, are we putting up the bond? And what might, and Michael's saying, no, they will be putting up the bond.
It's in our lease that we have to bond it.
So again, we got that written into the lease, that they will be doing the bonding.
In that circumstance.
Well.
Well, but again, the lease is, leases, the bond is not with them. I mean, they can't, they can't back their own bond. So.
Hey, though, that's why we did it the way we did it before.
I think we did it before, Joe, because the developer was the owner of the property, and we wanted the guarantees. The owner was the developer of the property. We wanted the guarantees.
Did it before to protect, to protect the owner of the property in case the solar company went out of business or reneged on the bond. That's why we did it before.
I think we have it where we have the guarantee in place now, and they're covering it. And if anything goes wrong, the proceeds benefit Wycomico County.
Yes.
That's right.
Any other questions?
No.
Where would we go with this now, Mrs. Hurley?
As I mentioned, it's going to come back as a public hearing and approval.
Okay.
October 1st.
The first meeting in October. Thank you.
Sounds good. Everybody good, right? I'm assuming that we have a consensus. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. Dave, good seeing you.
Yep, you too.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Borowski.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a, hang on a second, sorry, budget transfer issue, Journal Number 2016, $650,000.
Yes. So I'm asking what information, we got an email back saying you guys need more information. What more information are you looking for associated with budget transfers that we can provide when we actually have them? This is the first and only one so far this year, is this $150,000. This is to, this specific one is to purchase a fuel truck because our fuel truck died.
Right.
And we need a fuel truck to be able to continue to service and do our business. As such, they, we did a budget transfer, and it is for the Roads Department. Sorry, I can't read with my glasses. I have to look under my glasses. So that's why, to be able to see. So it was, we took, we did take money from Slurry Seal for $150,000, and we put it into Capital Trucks to allow us to purchase this vehicle to keep roads up and running with fuel. So in the future, what information is council looking for?
I think we're just looking for proper notification per charter so that we recognize that if there is a transfer that's going to be made, going to be made, that the proper procedure is followed.
So.
I believe this was something where we were notified on the, maybe a couple, about a week ago, that the transfer had occurred on August the 7th instead of it being, instead of being notified in July that there was going to be a transfer in August.
So there are two rules. There's two parts of the thing. It's 15 days in advance or five days after if it's an emergency. Us having no fuel truck is an emergency. In most instances, we're doing budget transfers because we need to sign a contract for something that a department needs. So us waiting 15 days is not a feasible timeline for us to be able to keep the operations of the county moving forward. Now, again, may I, please finish? So again, the charter states 15 days in advance. We didn't know 15 days before this truck was going to blow up. It didn't blow up, but died. We didn't know 15 days in advance that we were going to lose a vehicle. We needed to purchase a vehicle to keep our operations running. Most, not all, but most budget transfers will be happening as we move along in the fiscal year, as you have things that come up that you can anticipate 18 months prior to us creating the budget.
What happened to the truck?
Just talk.
Mike Swaby, Public Works. What happened was 237,000 miles. I mean, it had been reconditioned engine-wise multiple times. So there is a need for overhaul on the engine. I can't speak specifically, but something, the drive train, I believe. The other thing was the fuel system that measures and records by vehicle what each vehicle is getting in terms of fuel. The control board for that burned up. Another thing that I, I'm not sure Pam was aware of, but that made this a need for critical and speedy action, was typically a truck like this comes from two different vendors, one that supplies the truck and the other one that.
Joe. Oh, I'm sorry.
The other one that does the fit out for the equipment and the tanks that get put on it. This particular one happened to be already built and was ready to be purchased. It was a result of being canceled some, by some other buyer. And we got wind of it through Sourcewell. So there was no skipping of steps from a purchasing perspective, but we absolutely needed to jump to get this fuel truck here now to be able to use it.
You said you transferred the money from where?
Slurry Seal to.
Do you think you're going to need money towards the end of the year to make up for that?
Slurry Seal in the past has been an account that has been not utilized to its fullest. So it is budgeted in every year, but Slurry Seal is not one that ultimately we end up having to spend every dollar. Now, can something happen between now, you know, today is September 3rd. We have, you know, nine, 10 more months in the fiscal year. Inevitably, Roads and some of our other departments now, not so much right now. Sheriff's Department is one that's actually pretty full, so we don't have as much money there. But inevitably, we end up having some savings within the department that we have been able to, for the most part, do the transfers within the department and stay within the budget that we have been allocated for Roads. Now, again, can anything happen? I don't even want to say this out loud. Could we have a harsh winter? No, we're not having a harsh winter. Sorry, knock on wood. We're not going to have a harsh winter, but we could. And that changes everything when it comes to a budget. But we make our best estimates. We start the budget process in January. By the time you're done with a budget, it's 18 months after you started a budget. If I had a crystal ball and could count every dollar that we were going to spend over those 18 months, I wouldn't work for Wycomico County because I'd be making my money another way. It just doesn't exist. You don't have that ability in any business to be able to predict your expenses because things change.
I got you. You guys need the truck. I'm okay with it.
And so what I'm asking is when we do budget transfers in the future, in most instances, those transfers are because we need to go under contract now. And so those meet my definition as your finance director of an emergency. We have been sending emails on a weekly basis that says there have been no transfers. There was one email that we have a transfer. I'm asking, do you want to know department? Do you want to know reason? Do you want to know accounts? I need to know what information council is looking for for this.
Do ask the question. I get, you know, it says here, as soon as possible, no later than five days. I mean, if you're supposed to let us know within five days, I think you could only assume that we want to know why you did a transfer. I mean, you wouldn't just send an email saying, okay, we've transferred $150,000. I mean, wouldn't you send an explanation why you sent it?
I am asking, council, what is the list of information you would like?
It'd be very simple, just how much it is, which departments were involved with it, and the amount of the funding. Yeah. And the dates of the.
The purpose.
So it is.
Purpose. Purpose. We got a journal entry, a date, and an amount. I have no idea what that journal entry is. So that begs the question. I have to contact Mrs. Hurley. What is this for?
Okay.
Then she has to dig in and find out.
And so we got an email back that you need more information. I am sitting here very politely asking what that list of information is. So the list is, is you want to know purpose, department, account numbers, and dollar amount. Purpose, reason.
And the departments that are involved.
There would only be one department. We are not allowed to transfer between departments, and it will always be one department. It will always end, the organization number will always be the same two numbers at the end. The fund will always be the same two numbers at the beginning because by charter, I am not allowed to transfer between departments without council approval.
One thing I wanted to try to share with you a couple minutes ago was, you have a little more leeway than you were suggesting. You were saying we can't wait two weeks to notify the council. This is one instance, except for the fourth quarter. This is one instance where we do not need to be notified in a legislative session, as I understand it. It's just a communication with.
Right. And that's what I'm saying is, is we.
So you don't have to wait two weeks in an emergency. You can let us know within five days.
Right. And that's, and right now, Charles Schmeckel has been, my deputy director, has been sending an email every week.
Right.
So every Monday, he looks back over the last five business days, has there been any transfers? There has been one email to council that we have done a transfer.
Right.
It was this email. I have now received the information that council is looking for when we do a transfer in the future. We will send that list of information in addition to the journal entry number that we had been providing before.
That's good.
Can you also indicate whether it was an emergency, just for clarification?
Yes. And as I said, in most instances, they are going to be, in my definition as your finance director, they are going to be emergencies. So they will be within, they will be after the fact. Because there are going to be very few instances that I'm, that I'm going to feel comfortable that we can wait two weeks before we do this transfer.
Why you say two weeks?
Because the, it's either notify you 15 days before for just a regular transfer, or notify you within five days after. So I, what I'm saying is, is that if I notify you 15 days before, I then have to sit there for 15 business days and sit there and wait to do the transfer. That's going to hold up the reason why we need this transfer. So in most instances, it is going to be an after the fact based on my evaluation. So I will say in there that it is emergency, but most of them are going to be emergencies. I'll tell you that right now.
And just for clarification, these are transfers between general tossification. So that means going from like operating money to your capital, or from salaries and.
And again, in most departments, they're making the operational decision that they're going to give up X, Y, and Z to be able to do these transfers because they have a need for them.
Any other questions? Any other questions from you, Pam?
Nope.
All right. Mrs. Favy, everything good?
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Good evening.
Tim Boish, you go to closed session. No move. Second.
Second.
All those in favor? No, closed session.